They got me on, they got me on. Are you ready down there? Are you ready down there? Alright, the time has arrived. Alright, the meeting will come to order. Please stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Chris Boozer.
Here.
Dave Eggleton.
Here.
Brian Flaubert. Nate Louder.
Here.
Chris Bogus. Julio Pino. Gary Parker.
Here.
Marty Selker. Gary Scol.
Item four, presentations. I don't believe we have the presentations, am I correct? The presentation? Okay. Just wanted to talk about some procedure housekeeping things here to start. We are attempting as an administrative group to sort of streamline and reorganize the agenda and the board meeting process. So, a couple of things to note on that. We added this number five here for additions, corrections, or deletions from the agenda, just to allow that to occur. For things like what I'm gonna tell you, I think there's two things I was gonna tell you about. And then, as we go through to, we did some research and from what we're gathering, there's no requirement for a roll call vote. And there seems to be a lot of time in that. So, what I was gonna do is just call for voice votes. And then, we're still gonna record how you vote though. When somebody says no, if we can't tell who it was that said no, Christie's still gonna record it and I'll still ask who did it. But that way, instead of taking the time, you want it a time for all the votes, I was just gonna do it that way. So again, if you hate that, you don't like that, tell me. If four of the people say they agree, then we're gonna do it. But otherwise, I think, my hope is it'll help us get through the agenda a little quicker and streamline the process. So, item five, consideration of the agenda. There is no, there are no treasures reports to approve, so item eight, like to strike number eight. And, just a note on H. Item H, you have in your folders that contract, but that's actually an outdated contract. We were just notified today, I believe, Christie's. We were just notified today that the amounts changed, so we're waiting for that actual contract. But we are told that our portion is $3,725. So if you wanna write that into your margin next to item H, item H, $3,725 is our portion. And, I don't think I have any other modifications. Does anyone else have any additions, corrections, or deletions to discuss? Okay. Alright, moving on to item six, public comment period. Is anyone joining us tonight that would like to offer a public comment? If so, please raise your hand so I can get an idea on how many people wanna talk. We got that. Anyway, I got one, I see one. Go on once, twice. Okay, sir, would you come on down to the microphone, please? If you'll state your name and your township where you reside, please.
Ben Lewis. I reside in Monroe Township, which is not in this school district.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I reside in Monroe Township, which is not in this school district, but I hear it's talking about sports activity by a school.
Okay. The only problem is, we have a policy that says that you have to be a taxpayer for me to allow you to talk. And if I allow you to talk, not being a resident, then I have to allow anybody to come in and talk. Could I encourage you maybe to talk to the administrators afterwards? To understand what the concern is? You say it's a concern with the program, an athletic program?
Yes.
Yeah, would you mind talking? I see athletic directors here, but we also have admin up here. Would you mind talking with one of them afterwards? And then, we can understand the concern?
Nathaniel, I've actually spoken to Ben's wife, so I can fill the board in on the soccer concern, if that is okay with everyone?
Is that your concern?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, so, last year was the first year of junior high soccer. They really went out, recruited hard, they got just enough kids to play. We had like 11, maybe 12 kids. Well, this year, we had an influx of, I believe, 30-ish kids for junior high soccer. We have one paid soccer junior high coach and a volunteer assistant coach. This is what we have currently. The concern that was brought to me today was that that's a lot of kids for just one paid guaranteed coach to be there. So I guess I'll bring that concern to the board on behalf of the parents that reached out to me today.
Okay. Alright, well, obviously, we'll ask the administrators to look into it and prepare a recommendation for us and bring it to us. Okay? Alright. That's item six. Item seven, consideration to about the minutes of the June 18th combined work session, regular voting meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second? Thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item seven? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item nine, review and approval of the food service operating statement for June 2025. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion over here, I think Mr. Scol, and a second was Mr. Ladder? Thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item nine? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item 10, contingency fund report for July. Vern, I believe? Yeah, microphone?
You want that? Now, for the contingency fund, that's just a new report that we'll issue every month to the board
Right.
to tell you anything that's coming out of the $25,000 that the district started with.
That we budgeted for the superintendent, for admin team, correct?
For superintendent and the board to utilize. So, in a case like what Davey's bringing up, if you were to get another coach, that's the place we would take it from.
Okay.
Because since it's not in the budget.
Okay. And so, right now, there's been nothing taken out, because we're just starting?
Nothing through July 31st.
Okay. Thank you. $25,000? None's been used?
As of July 31st. We might have done something in the last two weeks, but...
Any other questions? There's nothing approved there, that's just an update for, you know, keep us informed and transparent. Item 11, approval of the June-July general fund, capital projects fund, cafeteria fund, and activity fund and scholarship fund bill schedules. Do I have a motion to approve, item 11? Motion and second? Thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item 11? Elementary roof project, the one that just got completed?
Yeah, the roof is completed. I haven't seen a final payment go out, there'd be, I don't think... Yes, I think that's about $10,000.
We spent about $148,000, that's the discussion. And it's about roughly 90%, so it's not 100% done, but mostly...
We just had the final walkthrough this weekly, was it this week, Monday?
Anybody else? Item 11. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item 12, communications, Riverview IU, I believe that's...
So, we didn't have a meeting in July, but in June, we actually approved the dates for the following year for meetings, as well as the directory for programs and services. So if there's anybody that would like that, I can email that to you. I do have it electronic. Also, they should have finished up the driveway, the parking area, since we met, and that did go a little over budget because of complications and the poor design of the parking lot initially. And we are also going to be losing Sean, the Assistant Executive Director. He has put his resignation in as of August 7th. And I would imagine he's gonna work out that transition with Riverview. He is going back to teaching, mentoring, and inspiring teachers and specialists.
Thank you. Item B, Career Center?
Uh, yes. We hired two instructors, one for welding, one for allied health, part-time custodial, some air professionals. We now just have an opening for a full-time custodial position and just opened up. We have 379 students for next, for the starting school year. All the programs are filled, except for Police Science has some openings, I believe in the morning session, and Computer Networking. Everything else has a waiting list. And I believe we have 28 students from CL in the room.
Thank you, Gary. Anybody question for that?
Yes, that's it for us. And about 11 more students than last year. I think last year was, the starting of the school year was around 367.
Okay, item C, Legislative Representative, Gary?
Okay, I have quite a bit. One thing that has happened over the last month, there is a House bill to change teacher certification again. Basically, to go back to the traditional way of primary through grade six, secondary, grade six through 12, and then specialized areas will be pre-K through grade 12 or up to age 21. So, it's going back to the way it used to be years ago. Also, for the tech schools, they, there's a bill of bringing barber training into the cosmetology program. And that the cosmetology program, some of the changes that have been made in that department will now become permanent. Also, there'll be wellness checks for cyber students that the students will have to be checked in to, by the staff of those schools. And also, students that are in cyber school have to check into the local public school twice a year over their progress and things like that. And also, their residency, where they actually live. Another thing, more quickly, cursive writing. There's a bill that cursive writing will be required back in the elementary school, which is a good thing. Another bill is that for cafeteria, that they wanna bring back on the federal level and state level, which is bipartisan, whole milk, or 2%. Because, and I think that's a great thing, because the fat in whole milk helps with brain development, bone development, and this water eat-down stuff they're getting now, it does absolutely nothing. One last thing is cell phones. The state is gonna maybe mandate all schools in Pennsylvania, no cell phones, period, in school. I was reading today about certain districts south of us, that as soon as a student walks in the classroom, they go into like a pocket thing, they are not allowed out at all. If they're caught anywhere within the building with the phone, the phones are confiscated, given back at the end of the day. The next time they're taken, until the parent comes in, they're never allowed to bring a phone, even in school to put in their locker. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's gonna pass the state. And I think we need to make sure we enforce that, that our students do not have cell phones in school, so... I think that's about it. I was trying to get through this quickly. There's, oh, the Senate did pass their part of the bill this afternoon. And there is an increase of $800 million in education. I tried to find about the cyber school, but that hasn't come out yet. But, they have to send it back to the House, because there's a $3 billion difference between the Senate and the House, and $4 million by the governor. And so... And also, our governor now is being investigated, started today, on inappropriate use of funds.
Just to tag along to that, I forgot, just to update you guys. We had talked about having a meeting. Brian and I were gonna meet with our state representative, Mr. Bashline. We were supposed to meet in July, I believe it was, and had a date scheduled. It worked for everybody. I received a call about a week before that, that they were canceling the meeting and because, I believe, they said they were going back into session. And so, it wouldn't be in clarion to mean, and that they would get back and touch the meeting, reschedule. And I'm still waiting for that, for that phone call.
Oh, I do want to add something out. Last night, Chris Boozer and I were both at a committee meeting, Republican, and we did speak very vocally about cyber charter school. I know our local representative was afraid, he heard about our last meeting, that I might chew his head off. But I said, no, I said, we're good friends. And, but it was a good discussion, because from the last meeting to this meeting, it was a complete change in the atmosphere, that many of the other committee people started to see what we were saying and started researching. And then, Chris saw that too, that a lot of them started asking questions. And they see what we're saying is really true, that we need to put a cap on cyber school. So that was a really good thing last time, so... And I didn't chew anyone's head.
Good job. Alright, thank you, Gary. Item D, CL AEA Representative, Mr. Shook?
Good evening. Thanks for welcoming our report. It's very short, sweet, as we don't have as much interaction with each other over the summer as we do during the school year. But it's been a great summer of those that I have communicated with. We're ready to roll on Monday. Looking forward to another great school year and all the things headed our way. On your agenda tonight, I know you're voting to approve an MOA for the insurance opt-out. We'll be voting on that Monday, when we have our membership meeting after our work hours on Monday. So, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Item E, Building Representative, I believe that's Mr. Beider?
Yeah, there's a few updates here. Like, we discussed a little bit ago, the elementary roof project is complete and ready in time for school. The new generator, the prep work is done for like the site pad and everything. The generator has been ordered and just waiting delivery at this point. So, we're at mercy to the supply chain, hopefully, sooner rather than later. Fingers crossed on that. The shop, the new shop exhaust that we spoke about the last few meetings, it's just about finished. The folks are just putting the finishing touches on that and it should be ready and start for school, which is very exciting for our shop kids. I'm real excited for them, for that new system. It'll be really good. And just, I wanna thank Mr. Eggleton, again, for finding that system and just the significant cost savings it has brought to the district. It's huge, so, thanks again for pursuing that and bringing it to everyone's attention. And last week, we met with ABM. That's the company that's doing the overall... They presented their initial findings to us about the high school here. There's a very good discussion. Had some questions go back and forth. And we are currently waiting more information from them. Marty, do you have anything else to add? Did I miss anything?
Marty said it went pretty well.
I had a phone call from them today. I believe they'll be out in two weeks to meet with me and take a look at what you guys had for recommendations and come up with some ideas and how we could address that. So, good conversation today, too. I told them I'd be in touch after we spoke tonight about how it's going so far. We've been with them for about five months, roughly, six months, with them looking at the building, seeing, you know, areas that we need to take a look at. So, it feels like a pretty good relationship at this point, so...
One thing I liked to add, and I know you guys have heard of it twice, I'm not much for taking thanks or taking the, I don't know how you'd put it, but it takes all nine board members and a superintendent to get something done like we got done in the shop. And all I'd had to do was had five board members tell me, no, don't pursue that. But I didn't. You guys all worked together, we all worked together. And then turned it over to Brian and let him do it. That's how we get things done, when we work as a team of ten. And we can continue to do that like we have right along. And I'd like to thank the entire board for the trust in doing that. And you see the results then. Thank you.
I was gonna add anyway, too. I think it's more like a team of, I forget, 20, but I, big shout out to Lee, Lee Park, and the entire Rainius staff. Because, they've done a phenomenal job. I wasn't even there to see the final product. It's been a couple of weeks since I was back there. But I mean, to me, if you're not wowed by what's going on back there, you're not paying attention. Because it's a total makeover of the shop area. Their painting, I mean, just, it just looks phenomenal. And I think the kids are gonna be really excited. We couldn't have done it without Lee and his crew of guys that, again, work... Yeah, and they work together to get the job done. And I just wanna give them a big shout out, really appreciate that. It's a, I'm glad to see it. Anybody else on building? Cafeteria, do we have cafeteria? Dave wants Jordan to give a cafeteria update. I think he's gonna respectfully decline that one. Uh, there's a book, yeah, there's a book in the folder. That's from her. I guess, as far as her reporter programming, that'll be September when we hear that. Okay, item 13, Business Manager's Report.
Angela's on vacation here this week. And I don't have anything other than I'm gonna piggyback on with Brian on his report that Gary already started.
Okay. Alright, so we're going right down to me? Is that right?
Yeah. Gary knew a little bit more than me with him passing that today. We had received a letter a few, three weeks ago, I'd say, talking about the fact that we don't have a budget yet and how that could potentially impact us if a budget doesn't pass. Vern and I looked at that, we know that we're in a good spot for the next few months. We want the budget to pass. But if it doesn't, we're able to take care of things until we get to that point. I'd been at a conference this summer and there was two people that talked about the state budget at that time. And I remember talking to Vern and maybe some of the admin guys about what they said. It was, what's the guy's name, Tim Strong? So it was the guy that came out and talked to us, or at least he did the chat with us. And the one person that was with him said, the budget's gonna pass. Tim said, September or October? It appears like Tim might be more correct right now. So, hopefully it passes. If it doesn't, we believe we'll be okay for, you know, a few months, paying bills and taking care of that stuff. But everybody's in the same boat with us. So I believe that pressure is there to try to help ensure that it passes, so...
So my part of it is, what Brian said, that we're okay to be able to pay bills, that will include us possibly having to tap into our CDs if something doesn't get done here rather quickly by the state. That's, that's gonna be the one way that we'll have to fund. The other item we can do instead is getting a TRAN, which I hadn't been involved with probably maybe 12 or 15 years the last time the state was late and ran over our cash flow needs at Keystone. So, here, we're gonna be putting that together in case it does take them another month or two to get together. And Gary, did you hear, is that Senate bill that's going back to the House? Do, you know, is it expected for the House to pass that? And the governor's probably on board with it, if the House is?
Why don't you use your microphone? They can't hear you. You're saying it's a three...
There's still a little difference in... And I think the cyber charter is actually gonna be even a separate bill in the Senate, but the Senate said they will not raise taxes, which, you know, some people want to in the House, but that, that'll be a big fight, so... And one good thing that Representative Bashline, we had a conversation after the meeting, that he said, he and a few others are trying to get together, instead of going through this process every year, that he is, wants to see us do a two-year budget. So we're not doing it every year, but actually put together a budget that we go for two years, which might be a good thing. So, we'll see.
That's interesting. The other item then that will, will come into play is our real estate tax receipt due over the next month. So, those items are, our big collection month will be September. And the tax collectors will be turning over the final discounts paid in August. So if we can get to that point, we'll probably be set for another month. But we gotta get to the beginning of September to be able to pay board bills and pay... And Angela, when she gets back on Monday, will be going through and projecting out cash flow for the next month or so to see how we're gonna do.
Okay. Rest of, are you done? Vern, you got Mark?
Hi.
You with admin, rest of admin?
Yeah, I was excited to get the new course guides out to the board to review. If you read through them, you saw that the RIASEC codes were incorporated into them. This is something that I feel very strongly about. I feel like it's gonna give a whole new meaning and drive the way we move forward with our education. There is a training at River Valley School District in October that we've been invited to. If any board members are interested in attending, I'm gonna put a team together to take to that training. And it's the guy who is kind of the father of the RIASEC that's presenting there. So, if you're interested in going, let me know. I'll get the date and the times out to you. River Valley, it's in Blairsville. There's three different locations he's presenting at, but River Valley is the closest one. Also, I already talked about the soccer. We've received our PSAs scores. They look very good. I was excited about, especially, I'll give a shout out to my seventh and eighth grade math scores. They, not only were they above state average, they actually increased over the previous year, which you don't see that very often once they get into junior high. It's usually a regression each year. They did better, the eighth graders did better as eighth graders than they did as seventh graders on the math portion. Same as seventh grade and sixth grade. As well as our Keystones are out. I have those exact scores. We were, in our literature, we're 67% proficient or advanced. Algebra, 50% proficient or advanced. And biology, 78% proficient or advanced. Those are all well above the state average, so... Just a shout out to our teachers. I think they're doing just such a fantastic job. I'm excited to have them back here in a week and see how we can keep getting better.
It's been a great summer. We, you know, we're kind of in that grind right before the beginning of the school year. Some of the things that we've been working on, in addition to what Davey's talked about, just met with the county to review our emergency plan. By the way, in that meeting, no concerns, there, we still have access to the emergency generators if needed, through the county like we did this previous year. Talked to them specifically about a reunification plan, which we've had, but it was decades old and needed to be revisited. I did reach out to Penn West University, which is where we had a memorandum of understanding many years ago to utilize that for a reunification point in the event that we would have to evacuate the municipal district, God forbid. And reached out to Dr. Anderson, the new president there. He's just been absolutely phenomenal. Kudos to him. He's sending one of his people down from the Edinburgh campus to work with us. I'm gonna meet with them. Mr. Webber and I will meet with them next week to finalize the reunification plan and finalize that emergency plan. You know, the middle school's kind of the big thing. Tomorrow, really excited, tomorrow's orientation day. Tomorrow, we bring in the sixth and seventh graders. They'll get to come in, come hear from the admin team, meet their teachers, go to their classrooms, give them a bunch of information. They'll get a little talk about cell phones and the, them not being allowed to have those during the school day. and, um, the, uh, them not being allowed to have those during the school day, um, so we have a plan for that, and that is part of, um, what we gave to you guys to review, um, I certainly hope you, you got a chance to take a look at that, um, I think it's fairly in line with, uh, what Mr. Sprowell was talking about. Uh, wanna really thank, once again, Jeff Stanfist, um, having met, perhaps, Jordan Johnson, Davey as well, with the middle school, they, they literally actually went through and hand-scheduled every single kid in the middle school to make sure that they were getting what they needed, um, what, you know, based on what we offer, um, we had to think outside the box and do some different things, we have some trimester classes, which is not something we've done before, that we're gonna play around with, give them sixty days versus forty-five days in some of those specials areas, um, excited about that and what that's gonna mean for them. Uh, big thing coming up is we're preparing for an audit, uh, through, uh, the Bureau of Career and Tech Ed, we, uh, we get audited every five years for our CTE program, and so, um, the audit takes place in December, so I've, I've got a lot of late work between now and then, and, uh, just looking forward to the, uh, first day of in-service, and more importantly, the first day with the kids, uh, you know, I, it's funny, as a teacher, I always look forward to the summer, um, and as an administrator, I actually look forward to the kids coming back, because I feel like that's, you know, more about what we are and what we do, and get away from some unpaid work and get back in with the kids, and so I'm super excited about that. Curriculum. Oh, curriculum, so, uh, the teachers continue, so every teacher, every grade level and every teacher has what we call a PCO, which is a planned course outline, they have their curriculum, they've had it done for a little while, those curriculums are, um, they change, they change over time, the state gives us different mandates, different standards, different things to do, so we look at those every single year, um, and we adjust them based on, on those standards, um, so they are, um, you know, documents that do change over time, we are, we are planning when we get the new website, which I'm hoping is gonna be sometime in the fairly near future, um, those PCOs will be posted online, and what you will be able to see is everything that every kid will learn in any class, um, with approximate even timeframe, we've asked them to chunk things out in months, so if you wanna know what your third grader's learning in, in ELA in September, you'll be able to see that. If you wanna know what your, um, tenth grader's learning in welding two, you know, in, in October, you'll be able to see that, um, you know, every, so that'll be posted publicly, we have it already, it's already to go, it's just a matter of putting it on the website, um, and then we do require the teachers to work on, tweak those, change those every year, uh, update them, improve them, whatever you wanna call that, um, uh, as the, so, uh, our teachers done a heck of a job, heck of a job with that, uh, so we're very pleased and proud of, of them putting that together, so.
I'd like to thank our shared service partners, Clarion Area Keystone, Red Bank, um, for working collaboratively with me to create programming for a number of our students, as well as the support from IU6. I couldn't do it without those shared service partners or IU6 and all the related services they offer our kids. Thanks.
Uh, our maintenance and custodial staff have done a wonderful job this year, their buildings are starting to really come together, uh, we're going to recognize them on Friday with the cookout, we do that each year, uh, should be a good time, um, eleven-thirty, Rob, I think is what we're doing, somewhere in there, so anybody, if there's a board member that'd like to stop by, we'd be happy to have you, uh, we'll be cooking out, um, probably behind the high school, I would think, at the pavilion out back, uh, but they really have done a nice job, and we wanted to, um, thank them, you know, they do each year, and this is typically how we recognize that. One other thing from Vern, and then we'll be done here.
I just thought about, we had a meeting a month or so ago, uh, and Brian had mentioned it earlier, Tim Strong from Pasbo, and he, he was chatting with us about countywide reassessment, Julia, Brian were there, Brian and Angela, and in generalities, the one thing that I took away from that meeting is, the Clarion County part of CL, your, your taxation, uh, assessment values will go up around ten times of what they are currently, and we remain revenue neutral next year, when we do next year's budget, so that roughly means that, I believe it's sixty-one point two eight mils in Clarion County now, that will be one-tenth, or six point one-two mils, to be able to get to the same end taxation dollar amount, based on assessment values that are ten times higher. So, in all generality, that's the one thing that I took away from it. The other thing is, just so you know, any increases in assessment from new construction, new businesses, whatever, that is not remain revenue neutral, that is permitted to increase the revenue that the district will budget for, and if you were to raise taxes for some reason, you can still do that up to the index in excess of the revenue neutral now. Anything, Brian, Brian or Julia?
I think the thing that I took away from is the green and clean, um, that's, that's an impact we don't know about, but when I went to do that for the property that I have, uh, they were very busy, very busy, and it was gonna take a month before I'd even have the, the checks that you have to pay, the money fees, and it took over a month to get those checks deposited through, uh, to my account, so they are very busy, so.
The chief assessor told me, I was, I chatted with her a couple of weeks ago, and she actually said that the number of assessment appeals were much less than what they had planned on, so all those letters and everybody gone who lives in Clarion County, uh, they must not have been as drastic of an increase that, that we expected.
Or it could be, because last I knew, they denied a Freedom of Information Act request, and wouldn't give out the commercial information, and they shut down the assessment office website, so you couldn't check anything, so, it could also be some other factors.
Okay.
I've heard a whole lot of people talking about it, but I think people tend to have a practical approach to it, and they're not gonna pay five or ten thousand dollars to horse around with a two thousand dollar assessment, but, uh, yeah, I think there's some other impediments to the appeal process. And you can appeal every year, don't forget, Arizona.
That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, that was superintendent. Item fourteen, executive session announcement, we have not had an executive session since the last meeting, uh, at least that I can recall, uh, we are gonna have one after this meeting, for reasons of personnel. So stick around afterwards, and Brian will tell us, hopefully a room with Eric Kuzniak. Okay. No old business, starting in the new business, item A, uh, I would ask for if we could do maybe A and B together, it's the same, same employee, uh, to approve, consideration to approve Jamie Schmider as a clerk typist substitute is the first one, and then B is part-time clerk as of August fourth, for the rates indicated, do I have a motion to approve A and B? Motion in second. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on A and B? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item C, consideration to hire a part-time paraprofessional is at fifteen dollars per hour pending receipt of all required legal documentation as indicated, do I have a motion to approve item C? I think we have the two, we have the second on that, too? Thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item C? All in favor, say aye? All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item D, consideration to accept the resignation of Doris Wonderling as part-time paraprofessional effective August eleventh, twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion to approve? Motion, I have a second. Motion in second. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item D? All in favor, say aye? All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. And we thank you for helping us out. Item E, consideration to reestablish the elementary guidance counselor position effective with the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I'm gonna ask Brian to lead the discussion, but I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second before we do that. Motion in a second, thank you. Mr. Wabbe, please explain.
Uh, we had, uh, last year, well, for the last several years, we've been, um, taking approach for, um, you know, the social emotional welfare of our students, using a team, um, and what we found last year was, uh, the, uh, what was, what's the title we gave that, the school support therapist position, which was extremely helpful, uh, but we had three of them throughout the year, and what was happening, they're, they're all great individuals, they all did a wonderful job, uh, and they were here for a little bit, and they were moving on. A problem with that is, uh, we have these services that need to be provided to our students, in order to have continuity, we recognize that we can't continue, we have that revolving door, and we believe as an admin team, this is the most appropriate way to fix that. Uh, we do believe that the elementary guidance counselor will be, uh, a wonderful addition for other reasons as well, uh, but for this, um, you know, the, the, the needs of the students, some of these are written into, um, IUPs, like this will give the continuity that we need to provide those kids at.
Thank you for the intro. Uh, board members, we got a motion in second, explanation, comments, questions, or discussion now from board members on item E? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Okay, item F, I believe this is what Mrs. Shook was referencing, item F, consideration to approve memorandum of understanding to the professional contract for an insurance out-doubt option, do I have a motion to approve? Motion in second. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item F? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item G, consideration for approval of an agreement with Andrew Klein, special education consultant at an hourly rate of three hundred dollars for the purpose of providing special education program consultation per the contract, do I have a motion to approve item G? Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item G?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ed.
What has been the average use of, um, Mr. Klein?
Yeah, uh, we have paid him very little over the last several years, um, you know, we'll, we'll call him occasionally with a question, he'll help guide us, but I mean, it's not in the thousands, it's, it's very little, um, the real benefit to Mr. Klein is if we get into a situation where we need that support, um, he will also, because he's guiding us, will be able to help us through a process as an expert witness, that type of thing, so, we had a question for him today, uh, today or yesterday, um, and he helped us, uh, helped us with that, um, so.
This is in the budget, right? Yeah.
Answer is. Anybody else? G? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, no? Any extensions? Motion passed. Item H, consideration for approval of a shared service expense, beginning August twenty twenty-five through June twenty twenty-six, with Clarion Area Keystone and Red Bank Valley School District to provide Title I reading special services to non-public school students. Do I have, and this is the one where you have the, our portion of the cost is three thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, we talked about that at the very beginning, do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on item H?
Yeah, I would like to add something so the public knows, and I'm, I'm gonna send this to all viewers, it just came out at six o'clock, yesterday there was an article in the Post Gazette, saying how Pennsylvania's small school districts are gonna be in a disaster situation in the next five years, it just came out of the Post Gazette, talking about other districts that are now doing shared services like we are, and how to survive, we must do that, uh, as an example, Auto Albridge, uh, does not have a chemistry or physics teacher to start this school year, so they wanna send their kids to Smithport, but the kids said that's the thirty, thirty-five minute drive on way, so now the Northern Regional College of Pennsylvania is gonna come in and teach it, New Brighton and Rochester are gonna share a superintendent this year, uh, another, two districts in Mercer County, uh, Charlotte Roy and that, they're in big trouble, they're sharing with Menneson, uh, classrooms and pro, programs, it's becoming a way of life in rural Pennsylvania, and so I know there's some people out there that are not happy about this, but this is gonna become a way of life because of money, and also we just can't find teachers, and so, they, the public needs to know that we're not the only ones doing this, this is across all Western PA and Central PA, and I will send you that article, it's a wonderful article.
I just wanna piggyback on that, um, I think we are doing a pretty good job on finding teachers, at least, last time I knew, we had a large number of applicants, I, I don't know that that's an issue, I think it's more budgetary, of, and everybody wanting to have a slightly different, uh, curriculum or path, but that, I think the RIASEC also helps that, too, but I would say this, too, I don't know if it was in one of the updates, but my understanding was the last meeting we had about shared services with Clarion Area, the discussion was AP courses, Advanced Placement AP courses, and so, I believe the admin group, as I understand it, the summary was, had a good conversation on both sides, and I believe the next step was to talk, talk to the teachers in both districts, and just to try to see how this is gonna work, but it's like Gary's talking about, you, you can't run a class for two kids, it, it's just not feasible on a lot of levels, but if you can, you have, uh, you know, eight or ten kids that need AP Chem II or whatever it is, and we can figure out a way to do it, maybe, um, remotely, or what's the word, uh, online, some, or one of the schools is online and the other one is live, work through those challenges in a way that addresses the educational, uh, concerns, again, like Gary said, it opens up all these possibilities for, uh, Advanced Placement courses, and that's what these, uh, these collaborations get us, uh, Mr. Quinn, he alluded to that for special ed services, too, again, we're at the mercy of, uh, the circumstances, we have to take care of what the law says, we have to, and sometimes we don't have the facilities to do it, and being able to have a partner district to help us is vital, otherwise, our taxpayers are paying it by themselves. Somebody else raised their hand, are you, I'm talking about?
I have some, uh, I, I'm just gonna piggyback off of this gentleman that come, wouldn't you have a shared services or we're doing a co-op support? Do the parents know where to go to? Because he come here to talk about it, and with our board ruling?
Yeah, and maybe we need to change our policy to?
We need to, we need to look at that, because, you know, if we're sharing something with them, and this gentleman has a, a complaint or a, a idea, you know, maybe we need to look at that to open it up, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but if we're sharing it, then their, their, their kids are part of the, the, um, project or concern or class, I mean, they should be allowed to speak.
I agree, but I think it needs to be something that you look at with all the districts, for example, if we, we do a lot of these with Clarion Area, uh, that we're talking about the sports, as long as it goes both ways, I, I see that as a good idea, but I think our taxpayers, if it's a Clarion Area program, they need to be comfortable going there if it's a program they run, and if, if we're entertaining the comments here.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, but while we're at the football coach, they go talk to Joe Carrigan.
And in his defense, um, when we talked this morning, uh, when Davey talked to your spells, um, he mentioned it was okay to come to the school board meeting, Davey did not ask where, um, if they lived in our school district, or even think probably about that policy, so, you know, it makes sense why, um, but, you know, that was, you know, we want anybody to feel like they can come and talk when there's an issue, you know, so, but we'll handle this, for you, no problem, Aaron.
And they don't have to go to the school board right away, if they wanna reach out to Robert I first, they won't bring it to the board, too, that's, that's the problem, or Brad, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, and even at Clarion Area, we, we work really closely with their administration a lot of times on, on this, so if there is an issue, um, it's not unheard of for someone to call Roger Walter, and then him to call Robert I, and we work through it, too, so, um, definitely the door is always open, especially for us, I know the policy says they can't come here and talk, but our phone numbers, they're not hard to find, the door's open, they can walk in our office, we'll meet with them.
Right, and I apologize for being the bad guy, I just know I had an issue, one of the first meetings I did, I just remember that was the, I had to follow the rules, they told me, otherwise that you, you have to let everybody talk, and I know we don't want that, so I apologize for being the bad guy.
Well, I, I also think that with, so sharing more classes, we're gonna see more of this potential, so it's probably something that, um, we need to think about, so.
Yesterday's paper, they had the, the class list for Benango and Forest, there are only two kids in kid, or in second grade in each forest, my thought was, there's, there's gonna be a fight for that authoritarian, and also I wonder if they're? My thought was, there's going to be a fight for Valedictorian, and also I wonder if they're going to be able to have a prom date. By the time they're all gone, see.
And they're both speaking of graduation, right? Guaranteed. All right, I think we got that. Unless somebody really objects, I think we should get a vote here on H, I think we're still talking about H. Good discussion, thank you. All in favor of item H, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? I just, just to throw this out there too, just so everybody understands parliamentary rules. When I ask for a voice vote, if you don't say anything, it's a yes. That's what the Roberts rule says, so just so everybody understands that. So if you, if you want to say no, you need to say no, being quiet doesn't count as no, just so everybody, just so everybody understands.
Item I, consideration to approve the sponsor-to-sponsor agreement with JC Head Start for the 25-26 school year. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion in second. Mr. Wyatt, can you give a brief summary on what that is?
Yeah, this is just so they can operate within our school. They have a classroom in the elementary, I don't remember where, which one, where's it at, guys? Second grade wing. So this is so they can participate in our school, and I believe a part of this also includes them being able to get lunch from the school, you know, from the provider here at school as well, so.
Okay. Do I already have a, very good a motion in second on that? Anybody else want to talk about item I then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Item J, consideration to approve a cooperative agreement with Mount Alderwitz's college to provide students the option to earn college credit through the college and high school program. Do I have a motion to approve item J? Motion, motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions or discussion on J? I think it's over. Unless you really want to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to say, $72 a credit this year is what this is. Most classes are three credits, so that means, quick math there Vern, 70, 70, 70. Just over $200 a kid can have college credit. We have, how many of them? So some, yeah, lab would have four credits, it would cost another $70. This is a great opportunity for your students, everybody should be talking about it. You should be taking advantage of it, it's a huge reduction in cost. We also have a very similar thing with Clarion now as well, and they have even more courses. They do not count as Clarion limestone credits, but a kid can take them starting in 10th grade. And that, they could get, you know, their whole first year of college done at, I forget the amount for those, somewhere around, some are very similar. So those are great opportunities for anybody's kids in 10th grade. They even said some ninth graders could take them, but if you have kids coming through the high school, it's a great thing.
35 courses is what Rob said, for those who are out there, 35 is roughly what we have. Credits, I'm sorry, 35 credits, that's not courses. I was going to say something else about that.
Oh, that, I think that fees, because it's still money, and I know budgets are tight, so. It's still money, but I think that's where the RISE Act comes in there too, because then that's obviously for college track kids. If you're thinking you might want to go at all, it's the thing to do. If you're looking right into trade or industry or certification, maybe not. But again, that's one of the RISE Act advantages, it helps make an informed decision on whether or not you want to go in that track, the college track.
All right. So do I have a motion, I have a motion in second, correct on J? Anybody else on J? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. I'd ask for a motion to approve K and L together. They're both related to Vern Mofford, who is graciously helping us out, as he has been. Do I have a motion to approve K and L? Motion in second. Comments, questions or discussion from board members on K and/or L?
I have some questions.
Yep.
Okay, so the one contract, and I thought they were saying, so I thought maybe that was a mistake, and then I realized they're two different contracts, and I didn't print the second one. The one is totaling, what is it, 16,000, oh, I don't know. $16,200 for the year, correct?
Yeah, so that includes the reimbursement to PASBO. There's an amount for PASBO to allow him to operate here with us.
And then the other one is $81, that includes the fee.
Yep.
Do we have this all budgeted in our budget already?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know if that was going to be coming out of the $25,000.
No, 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 we do have a budget to take care of it.
Anybody else on K and L? Not K and L, yes. All right, I got a motion in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. All right, next page. Let's do, let's do M and N together, they both involve approving shared services agreements with Clarion Area School District. Do I have a motion to approve M and N? Motion in second, comments, questions or discussion from board members on M or N?
It's going to be a broken record here.
Go ahead.
What are the costs for this?
The cost, we had budgeted for the play already. I don't remember the exact amount for the play or musical, but we had budgeted for that. So it's not going to cost us any different than what we budgeted. They're not charging us to be part of it.
Might cost us less, right? Wouldn't it potentially cost us less?
It'll cost, so I should say this, it'll cost us less because we're doing middle school, and middle school plays and musicals are cheaper than high school. So they charge you more for those, for the showings, you know. They get you, if you have it three nights, four nights, I mean, there's ways they get you that. So it will be cheaper in that regard, because we did budget truly like we were having the high school one, so. And there'll be no cost back and forth either way. You know, we're excited about this. This is really what came out of the discussion that Nathaniel or somebody just told us about with Clarion recently. We did talk about AP classes, things like that. We did not feel that we had enough time. We believed that these were two classes that we could potentially see a student or two come into. But we don't even know of that, because it has to fit in that, to kids' schedules. They will come here for the student run, or they will go there for the esports, so. The AP classes, we are talking about, maybe we could do something where it's live streamed, not like banked, you know what I mean, but lecture.
So if they're coming here, is Clarion the one providing the transportation to us?
Yes, yep.
Any other questions on M or N? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Item O, consideration to approve the procurement of natural gas for up to two months, October through November of this year 2025, and authorize the administration to lock in a two to three year contract when deemed appropriate. I'm going to ask Vern to give a little background explanation, but I could have a motion in second first, please. Motion in second, thank you. Vern, would you please give the board the background explanation?
Yeah, so our natural gas delivery will come to an end during the September period, and that's generally when the September meter reading is done. So, we're not, we believe from our experts who advise us on purchasing, they're saying that they believe the price of gas will go down over the next month or two. So what I'd like to do is right now, is to procure one month of natural gas to extend out our current supply from that beginning of middle September to beginning, middle of October. And if the prices don't go down or stay roughly the same, then we'll lock in as soon as possible with the lowest vendor with a contract that's acceptable. If that price does continue to drop, we would then buy another month and maybe hold off another month to get a lower price. One thing I can tell you is we've been looking at it for the last three weeks, and the cost in those three weeks have dropped $1,800 per year. Now, it's always a gamble up and down, and you know, this is just kind of what I've always done in the past. And I can tell you, this one we got on Monday, the cost went back up about $800 a year. So we're still better than we were three weeks ago, but what's it going to do? Our advisors are saying that storage is getting full, and when storage gets full, then the price comes down. So, I mean, I always want to protect the district and lock something in for as long as we can. And they're suggesting two to three years, if you would be okay with that. And then we would just look at, look at the rates here over the next couple of weeks and make a decision. But we would definitely get at least one month from UGI, which the rate we would get is actually lower than what we're paying right now. Not a lot, but a couple cents lower.
Vern?
Something you got to pay attention to, we did it before, is Trump's really trying to send liquefied natural gas to Europe. Well, if they get that through, you're not going to get those dips like they did as long as they're mine. So you're really going to have to stay on that news. They haven't quite got that in process yet, and everything takes a little while to do.
When you say a little while, how long are you thinking? Months?
Maybe a month or so, if they get a push, you know. Sometimes the news is not correct, you know. They're not as far along as they think, or the distribution channel aren't opened up yet. But I think you're going to see natural gas, we're going to work and get that call, at least this year.
There's another major thing that affects gas right now, and that's hurricanes in the Gulf. And we have a tropical storm coming up right now to Florida. And if it's a good hurricane season, the lead prices will go down. If it's bad, that could impact prices to go up. So, those things will kind of play, if you approve this motion.
I haul water from those pads, and they are really producing out of those wells at the moment, a lot higher than the one. So you're just going to have to, you know, it's great if you guess right, and it's not so great if you miss.
I think, I don't disagree, but hindsight's always 20-20. And we have to choose to either wait until our next board meeting and be at the mercy of the market to approve whatever happens to be there right then, or we delegate that. I mean, they'll do whatever we tell us. If we say lock in only if it's this price, they'll do it. If we say don't do anything, they'll do that, but we're going to have a problem keeping the hot water hot if we don't do something, so. And I think the rates, if I'm not mistaken, where did you tell me, the contract numbers that they wanted us to sign the last couple of weeks were higher than they are now, and so it would be a negative impact to our budget if we. And so the whole idea is we're trying to wait till they go down, so it's not as big of a budget impact, correct?
Yeah, so they kind of get as low as they can, you know, and we lock in at that, the best dip.
Right, but it's like Marty said, I mean, your crystal ball works as good as mine or his. Nobody knows what it's going to do, so I mean, board members, we got to tell them what to do.
But, well, you know, what I find, I don't know if natural gas is the same way as propane, but as we move closer to winter, the prices go up, because the demand is there. If you don't lock, and it's better to buy now than it is to wait till then, because they get busier too, and they can charge more. So I mean, I'm good with trying to get it locked in if.
And if you guys say, hey, just go back and lock in tomorrow, we'll just do it.
I'd rather wait, because maybe it'll be different than natural gas.
You've been looking at the numbers, I mean, and you're going to look out for what's best for us. Lock it in when you're experts and when you feel it's right to do it. Is that what this motion is saying to do, right?
Correct.
I mean, does anybody disagree with that? Lock it in when you think it's best and when the people are telling you, I mean.
Is there any downfall, like, do we have to produce so much money to them on that lock-in? No.
It's a contract deal, I believe.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a set rate for two years at the same cost per decathour, the whole time. And you know, it's just trying to have that crystal ball to say, when's it at the best advantage for us, for our budget. And, you know, and I know my boards in the past always said, let's protect out two or three years at a time, if you can.
Julie, what do you say? How did you reset that?
I was just saying, do they expect a huge deposit or something to maintain that? If not, then I don't know.
To me, the natural gas is what Vern's talking about, is I understood a couple of weeks ago, whatever it was, and he told me. They produce the gas and they put it in storage fields, and we have storage fields around this area. But when the storage fields get full, there's nowhere to put the gas. And so our market is typically different than NYMEX, which is the Newark mercantile. That's more of the national market. Our market typically varies or fluctuates from that, and we're sort of at the mercy of local factors like that. And that's what I understand they're telling us, is it, and this is the time of year when they put it in the fields, because like Julie said, it's not cold, obviously we're sweating up here. Nobody's burning a whole lot of gas, it's bare minimum right now, so supply's up. That's what he's saying, is it's driving the price down. And we're hoping to take advantage of that to the tune of a two or three year, you know, advantage to the district. So I mean, to me, I would, I mean, if we got to October, November, you started getting the cold snaps and people started sucking on the gas lines now. If we're having, don't have something like that, I would be a little concerned that I'm going to see the price go up, but that's my take.
You know, and certainly that's the way it normally works seasonally throughout a year. The two items probably right now that will certainly drive the price up or down would be the hurricanes and then the opening up to overseas distribution of our natural gas. And if that goes through, that's why they're saying it is a good thing to do it in the next month or two.
It's old school supply and demand.
Exactly.
Marty, you want to add something, or?
We were just talking there. Natural gas has a lot more than just a heating purpose. It used to be just heating, now so much electricity is produced as natural gas. And I think why Vern said it went up this lately was looking at the temperature. We're massive, we're, every air conditioning, the furnace is doing winter burn, so it gives a lot of. I'm telling you, I haul off these pads, they're pushing way more gas off of them right now, for this time of year. So there's some need, plus whenever they open up with Europe, you're going to see a massive sale there. It's going to make the domestic consumption, it's like. And I'm not telling him to do what he does, he's good at it. But you've got to really pay attention to a lot of other factors that weren't all included. It'd be pretty easy to make the wrong decision based off of this.
I agree, I agree with you Marty, and I think I haven't asked for it, but I'm pretty sure I speak for him. He'd rather we make the decision for him, because then he has no risk. So if we want to go different, we just got to tell them what the numbers are. But I don't disagree with you Marty, it's, I'm glad we got Vern to make the decision, my opinion.
Gary wants to raise taxes to put an air conditioning, is that what you're doing?
Well, and again, I know they're talking about like Hermosity, for example, Marty, I think that's what you're talking about. There's all these microphone violations going on. Yeah, the power plant, I believe in Hermosity, they're talking about putting in natural gas, that's going to have a huge, if and when that actually hits, obviously massive, massive effect on the local economy. All right, so, I'm still on O. Everybody understand what we're doing with O? We have a motion in second, I'm going to call for a vote, if it fails, we'll talk about contingencies. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Item B, consideration to approve the procurement of electricity for a two to three year period starting December 2025, with the administration authorized a lock-in rates when deemed appropriate. Motion, thank you, do a second, second. Vern, same deal, give the background, please. Try to be nice with the forecasting of the price, too.
Well, I gotta tell you, and you said it, that electricity, our advisors are saying lock it in as soon as you can. So, the advent of Homer Centers, natural gas plan.
Homer City.
Homer City?
I believe, that's my.
And then another one in Beaver, they're saying that electricity is only gonna go up. We're behind in generation facilities, and that's only gonna get worse. Everybody probably saw their last electric bill, it increased maybe thirty, I've heard thirty, fifty percent from some homeowners, and we're getting the same thing. And after hearing from our number one electric guy, I'm afraid I didn't get enough in the budget this year to cover electric. I put an extra twenty grand in at the end, but I'm thinking we're probably gonna be about ten thousand under budget if we have one more year. But anyways, with that being said, the advice is to lock in now. So, if you approve this, we'll look at, we'll get the lowest quotes on the lowest, look at their contract, and if it meets our needs, then we'll lock it in immediately.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. My understanding, too, the forecast for electricity was worse as far as percentage increase and effect of the budget, correct, compared to gas. Okay, anybody else on P as far as comments, questions, or discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Item Q, consideration to approve the participation in the Wildcat Cheer Program to compete in PIAA sanctioned competitions under our shared agreement with the Claring Area School District and include eligible students from North Claring School District. Do I have a motion to approve item Q? Motion in second. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members? My only comment would be, I do, as reference, we have a shared agreement with Claring Area, perhaps I forgot it, but I don't know that we have one with North Claring. So, my suggestion or comment would just be that if there's eligible students and if we start down that road, we probably need to get that documented somehow to understand their responsibility to cost sharing and all that.
They passed this same motion this week, Davey.
Claring Area?
Yes, they participate with us under Claring, obviously Wildcat Football. There would be no cost to them through this, what we're putting here, as part of being in that shared agreement with us in North Claring Area. There's two kids, I believe, in it, Davey?
Yeah, and they've participated in the sideline cheer since the beginning of the co-ops, I believe. I wasn't here completely when those were made. But, you know, our cheerleading coaches have done a great job, and they came to us over, actually it was last spring, and said we wanted to compete. Our numbers are up, they put a lot of work in. The cheer program, probably three years ago was about ready to just fold. There wasn't many kids in it, and now there's gonna be thirty varsity cheerleaders, maybe more. And it does include a couple, there's not a lot in North Claring, I believe it's two, but they've been included in that since the beginning. So, we're just excited to offer this opportunity to our students and the students involved in the co-op.
Right, I think we should do it, absolutely. And I was just saying, I know Claring Area recovered there, we have the agreement. My point was just, I don't know that we have an agreement in writing with North Claring Area. It's just, it's easier if we don't have it to get it papered down with the district as far as like, but Julie, is that about transportation? Just to make sure there's no surprise in that, or it's easier if it's only one kid versus if there's fifteen kids? Just looking out, just, it's easier if everything's up front, I think. Anybody else on Q? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. I'd like to ask for a motion for R through W. Looks to me like that's a lot of effectively supplemental positions, supplemental amounts or contracts, so if I could have a motion to approve R through W. Good, motion in second. Board members, please take a minute and look at that, R through W. Again, anybody wants to talk about any of those things, now's the time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Thank you. Item, let's do X and Y together. X is contracted service agreement for Crystal Seeta, as I'm sure I pronounced that wrong, I apologize. School dental hygienist for twenty-five, twenty-six, and Y is the appointment of Dr. Ben Carrico as school dentist at no cost to the district. Do I have a motion to approve X and Y? Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on X and Y? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. We thank them for helping us out. All right, now I'm thinking, let's try to do Z through CC, looks like it's all related to busing. So, Z, as in zebra, through CC, if I could have a motion to approve those items. Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on any of the bus-related items, Z through CC. CC. CC.
Two C.
Cat, cat, cat. Very good. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. D, I'm just gonna ask for D by itself, but, oh, I'm sorry, DD. Do I have a motion to approve DD? It's consideration to approve school athletic volunteers as presented for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year pending receipt of all required legal documentation, and then page seven and eight, and then beginning of nine are those volunteers. Motion, second? Yes, second, Mr. Booth, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on the volunteers? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. I guess I forgot to, I think I amended this, the EEE, I think I forgot to amend it. Just for clarity, it's typographical, there's a type of the, so, you hear me out, and if I take a motion to amend, I'd be, Vern, is that all right? You think that's all right if I do that? Parliamentary, yes. You think it's okay? Just to make sure I'm doing all right here. So, the words per day are not in here, so it should be the second line after lunch. We're talking one free breakfast and lunch per day for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. It's not one free lunch for the whole year, it's actually per day. And I think that's common sense, but in today's world, we just wanna make it real clear. So, do I have a motion to approve item EE as indicated? Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, discussion on the amendment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? All right, EE is amended to include the per day language, apologize. All right, do I have a motion to approve item EE as amended? Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on EE? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Let's do FF through HH together. Again, if somebody wants it different, just shout it out, but let's try to do FF, GG, and HH together. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion in second. Comments, questions, or discussion from board members on those three items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. All right, let's do II through LL. The remainder of the agenda pertaining to the course catalog, student handbook, and policies. Do I have a motion to approve II through LL? Motion in second, thank you. Comments, questions, discussion from board members on II through LL? All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. All right, that's the last item on the agenda, but don't get too excited, two things I wanna go over. The reason why we do this meeting today is because our regularly scheduled meeting fell on the first day of school. I'll call that an oversight. I don't think that makes sense for a lot of reasons, so administration just came to us and the board and said, hey, could we do these things before school starts? Because obviously this was a relatively long meeting, get these things ironed out, get ready for school. Board members were in agreement, we all met here. As far as I understand it, we've covered the things that we need to cover next week, and we don't see a need for the meeting next week. So, I propose we cancel next week's meeting and we have to advertise that, I believe. Anybody have any questions on that? Could I take a motion to that effect? Somebody wanna make that motion? Michelle Hutter makes the motion to cancel, cancel August twentieth. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Who are, thank you. What's that? You wanna come and sweat, okay. Gary, you can come, we'll open the auditorium, and Gary can be here. Anybody wanna join, Gary will be here. After dinner there, right, Gary?
After dinner.
All right, I got a motion in second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? All right, so eight-twenty's canceled. Everybody got that, so don't, other than Gary, no one's gonna be here next week if you show up. One last thing I wanted to throw out there and see what you guys thought. I, just looking ahead, I have a scheduling conflict with a regular meeting scheduled for October fifteenth, so I will not be able to be here. And it's up to you guys, if a quorum, you still wanna get together and do it, that's fine. If it can agreeable, I'd like to move it, if that's okay with you, to the twenty-second the following week, but it's up to you guys. What's that? The twenty-second? Okay. Is there anybody, anybody else?
Unfortunately, I won't make the meeting as scheduled, so I don't know whether you're on the floor or not, I don't know.
You're saying fifteen or twenty, what did I say, twenty-second? You say.
Scheduled meeting, I was already not gonna make it to, so.
Anybody? Anybody else? It's very good.
I believe I have an out-of-town training for work that day, so maybe.
Which day?
The fifteenth.
The fifteenth, awesome.
Yeah, so, I might not work for a year, I think, meeting that.
All right, so we got three people. Does anyone have an objection to the twenty-second? Julie, would you be okay with coming here instead of going there? That's right. Does anybody have an issue with that? Okay, if we can, like I said, I was just looking ahead at the calendar, and we were talking about canceling the twentieth, I figured that way we're not paying any extra advertising, so we'll put that all in the same advertisement. So, we'll move, well, I guess, do I have a motion, can I get a motion to move the October fifteenth regular meeting to October twenty-second? Motion in second, okay. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Okay, so, if you do the notice, make sure it goes out to cancel the twentieth, and in the same notice, move the fifteenth, October fifteenth to October twenty-second. Okay, that's all I had, just all that's on the agenda, so we can't spend money or do anything exciting, but does anybody wanna talk about anything else at a public meeting without violating sanctions?
Yeah, I have one thing. I don't, most of you knew Lynn Hapley real well, she did twenty years on the board, just a great person, great family. I went to Bob Sawyer and the family, and I'm gonna start a scholarship fund for them. Bob Sawyer are gonna put, and I are gonna put the feed money in, so it's at least two years. I'd like to get it in the paper, because I know people have been asking what they can do for Lynn, but we're gonna do it through our foundation, CL Foundation. The family will be involved in the specs on it, and I think they're gonna get hold of administration from there. So, I'd just like to put it out there that we are going to start a scholarship in Lynn's name, and if anybody knows the history of CL, like some of us do, she was a great person, and she did a lot for this school. So, I just wanted to get that out there. Anybody interested, they just get hold of the CL Foundation.
Thank you for mentioning that, Dave. I forgot that I was gonna mention that, because we also lost another former board member too since our last meeting, and I was gonna acknowledge that, just to thank them, both immensely for their service. But we did have somebody reach out too, another person reached out, and they wanted to know what they could do for Lynn in general, and I believe.
Forget, I think I'm loud. They're going to do a book collection, no, not collection, might be the right word, Rob. I think collection is the right, right term. We're gonna have a shelf with books that were of special interest to her, that'll be dedicated to the elementary students, and people will be able to donate to that, and then they're gonna fill that bookshelf up, and there'll be something to commemorate her on that shelf, and as the kids have access to those books.
Yeah, we definitely wanna honor her service, and Terry Ledbetter is the other board member that passed away. And again, just honoring their service. Those of us sitting up here know it very well, it's personal, it's real for us, the commitment, the time, it's a well-paying, yeah, right, it's a, you get no money, and you get, you know, no matter what you do, you're making people mad, and it's, but you're doing it because you wanna help kids. You wanna help, if you're doing it for the right reason, you're doing it because you wanna help kids. And I just, I know those people were helping kids, and I thank them for their service and their families. Anybody else, Gary, I think you wanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something about Jim George from Mothie's Busing, that he is improving. He found himself again, that's why he didn't give up his bus run into Rossi's. He is gonna do the good news run for the kids, and he does that for nothing.
The governor?
Yeah. And so, my wife went over last week to visit him, and his wife has spent some time with him, and he is improving, so that's good.
Very much so. Thank you for that, I had heard that too. Anybody else? The executive's gonna be in two oh eight, what's your air condition? Motion to adjourn? Motion in second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, no. Any extensions? Motion passed. Meeting adjourned.